Welcome to December 14, 2021, regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, will you read off the closed session? Item one.
Closed session for today, December 14th, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel re-existing litigation, county of Calaveras at all versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation at all, 117-MD-2801.
Public comment on closed session agenda items or item.
There is no online public comment.
With that, we'll move into closed session. Thank you. Welcome back to the December 14, 2021, regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please stand with me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have a report out on closed session, please?
Report of closed session for today, December 14th, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel re-existing litigation, county of Calaveras at all versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation at all, 117MD2804. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. Staff announcements, this is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Von Latta.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Chris Von Latta from the administrative office. I just wanted to take this moment, given that this is our last board meeting of the year, and looking forward into the next calendar year and fiscal year, to thank you all. I have been delighted and regularly told people how cohesive I feel like this board has been, certainly during my tenure here at the county. And I think, given the incredible challenges that all county staff, who also I would wish to extend much gratitude to, staff department heads, our partners out in the county who help us with our everyday business and moving things forward. In the face of a second very challenging year in a row, many positive things are in the works and have been happening. We know about strategic planning, we'll hear later today about ARPA. We are moving into a new budget cycle and potentially on the horizon some very large projects that will stay with this county and move it forward for decades, as opposed to the kind of year-to-year budgeting and whatnot that we've done in the past. And a lot of that will flow from the strategic plan and some once-in-a-generation opportunities that are coming our way with different funding sources, in any event. But it's not just that, it's that I've really seen, and I feel like everyone is coming together and trying to find our commonality, and where we're finding that, moving on those things and actually making some really good progress in the county. So with that, I just want to again thank all of you and all of our department heads, other elected officials and colleagues, and I'm really excited and looking forward to what comes next in the next calendar fiscal years.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris Kay. Ms. Medina.
Good morning, Chair, Stopper, respective Board members, CIO Von Latta, Deputy Clerk of the Board in our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today I have a few announcements. First of all, I would like to thank our buildings and grounds and our public works teams for helping out our animal shelter services with our muddy sally port located behind our dog runs. They scooped yards of gravel into the area so our animal service team and our volunteers would not get so muddy, so thank you again, team members. If any of our community members need help or need some assistance during this time of year feeding their dogs and cats, we have a little extra to help out with our community due to our community members that have donated plenty of food this year, so we are looking forward to serving you. Please call us at 209-754-6509 if you need that assistance. We are looking forward to an eventful 2022 year at animal services, along with our partners with Focus, our Friends of Calaveras Animal Services, and our volunteers, and our honored animal services team. We will be having several free rabies and microchip events and several other events as well. Thank you. Please stand by.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Is there any further staff announcements?
There is no further staff announcement.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and hold off on the public health update for a moment and move recognition and acknowledgements ahead of it. Madam Callaway, since you love the search and rescue team and the Sheriff's Department so much.
I'm going to have a hot flash at that last comment.
I'm sorry.
Yes, search and rescue, I'd like to say that they came out and helped me this morning, but they didn't. I just have a shovel, so I have to just say it is truly my honor to be able to do this. It's a proclamation recognizing Chuck and Donna Hillis' 14 years of dedicated service to the residents of Calaveras as member of the Calaveras Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team. Chuck, Donna, could you please come up? What, you think I was going to do this by myself? Donna and I go way back. Whereas the Board of Supervisors and the Calaveras Sheriff's Office are pleased to honor and recognize members of the community that contribute to the well-being and safety of their community. And whereas Chuck and Donna Hillis served the county's Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team over 14 years in the capacity of, what's your title?
Commander.
Good, you read this. Go ahead. Did you read it? And call out coordinator, searchers, incident command, and food services. And whereas Chuck and Donna have demonstrated a true passion for service and have been amongst the first call to conduct the telephonic call-out and tracking of responding members when the team was called upon to rescue a person in need. And Chuck and Donna assumed the role of food services for search and rescue team after seeing the need for such services and procured the equipment needed for transportation, preparation, and storage at their own expense. Yeah. Thank you. Chuck and Donna provided food services and rescue incidents for both local and mutual aid resources and have been the sole provider of meals for searchers, which at times required the serving of over 100 meals per meal period. Who did the dishes?
I was driving.
Chuck and Donna have been deployed on mutual aid incidents during large-scale wildfires occurring in Northern California and have consistently been ready and willing to assist a mutual aid incident as needed. Chuck and Donna have exhibited excellent professionalism, tireless commitment while being dedicated to the ideals of the search and rescue team and have a new building and now you're leaving. Well, we dare. And have displayed selfless service by volunteering their time, funds, and efforts to faithfully serve persons in need and to further the effectiveness of the whole team. No, thank you. Why haven't finished? I need to make sure my colleagues are in agreement with the optics. So may I have a motion, Mr. Chair?
Move.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf, and a second by Mr. Toffinelli.
Motion by Supervisor Follendorf, the second by Supervisor Toffinelli. Now, it is resolved that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors recognizes Chuck and Donna Hillis for their dedication to the residents and visitors of Calaveras and for their service to the state of California during mutual aid incidents over the 14 years of service and commend them for their dedication to public service and volunteers. It was passed and adopted by the Board of the town of Calaveras, though we sometimes think of it as the state of California and the state of California this 14th day of December 2021.
Marita. Marita. Ms. Callaway, two things.
To call for the vote.
Yes. Prior to calling the vote, can we have some comment from our other sheriff's officers and everyone else here?
Since I've already screwed up.
It's okay, but we want to give them their opportunity.
Does anybody want to say anything or do anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So as you mentioned before, Chuck and Donna have been a huge asset in the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Calaveras County. Their efforts have gone unnoticed through the state of California, through all the mutual aid efforts, not only going and helping out, but taking care of the mutual aid assets that come here. So this is from the state of California OES Governor's Office of Emergency Services. It's a commendation awarded to Chuck and Donna Hillis, presenting recognition and gratitude for your dedication to the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Team and the significant contributions you have made to the team in the 14 years of membership. Your willingness to provide services, assistance, and your commitment to ensure the team's overall logistical readiness and success have been very much appreciated. On behalf of the team, the Sheriff's Office, the citizens of Calaveras County, and the state of California, we thank you for your service, and this is from the state of California.
This is just a small token of the Sheriff's Office's appreciation for what you folks have done for us tirelessly. You folks have been feeding us and feeding all the people that come around. A plaque was not what was really designed for you folks, so this plaque is a cutting board. So it says Chuck and Donna Hillis, for your dedicated service, Calaveras County. Thank you very much. More stuff you know what to do with. Greg and Tim, why don't you guys come up here? Ms. Callaway, would you like to call for the vote?
I don't know. I would like to say it's been an honor to work with you guys, and I feel we have one of the professional search and rescue teams in the state. And I've seen a lot of searchers, and it's been an honor to serve with you guys and work with you.
She said it all.
So let me call for the vote either way, you'll have to give that back. Mr. Chair, could you call for the vote, please?
All those in favor? Those opposed? Passes enough five, go vote for the board. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's been a long time. All right, we'll move to the public health update. Informational item, public health services. Receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Corey Allen.
Good morning, Chair, Stopper, members of the Board, Corey Allen, your Director of Health and Human Services. Today with me presenting on your COVID update is our newest member of our executive team, which is Marcus Munoz. He's now the Assistant Director of Health and Human Services, and he will be covering the fiscal elements of our presentation today. We also have Colin Rodriguez, our Deputy Director of Public Health. We have your Health Officer, Dr. Ramiroz, and of course, your Chief Executive of Mark Twain Medical Center, Doug Archer. So we wanted to give you a robust, complete presentation today to sort of catch us up. So with that, I'm going to share our screen and get us started. All right. So as you can see, let's see, today by the numbers, the total confirmed cases that we've seen with COVID-19 is nearing 4,514 of those who are active today and four individuals are hospitalized. The eligible population in Calaveras County that's been fully vaccinated is nearing 55%. We've seen 4,377 cases recover and sadly 91 deaths. Now, we are now tracking the percentage of our population, ages five to 11, who have been fully vaccinated. We are very low, we are at 2.38%. The state of California in that same age group is at five times higher at over 11% vaccinated. The percent of those who are in the ages 12 to 17 years old in Calaveras were just shy of 30%. The state RIDE number is more than double that. So as you can see, we do RIDE in the.
Someone talk about the word documents unmuted, so please make sure you're muted.
It happens to the best of us. So contact tracing and investigation, as you remember, this is really where we can see where we're at with the pandemic. So our contact trace and investigation is a daily operation. We're being supported by a team from the state of California, and this is to ensure that we stay timely in those outreaches. At the onset of the pandemic, this helped us determine if we were in community spread, and we are so past that point, we can definitely say COVID-19 is here in Calaveras County. And because of that, we won't report further on where the COVID-19 might be coming from because it is coming from both within and outside of our community. And the reminder we always give is that through vaccine, proper masking, and social distancing, we can start to mitigate that spread. Now, a lot of us are asking questions about this Omicron variant, so today, Dr. Ramiroz is going to walk us through some information about that.
Hi, good morning. So what we know about Omicron is we're still learning about it. With regards to infection and spread, it is way more easy for Omicron to spread than the original variant of COVID. With regards to how much more it is that it's likely to spread compared to Delta, we're still learning. What we do know is that it can spread the virus to others, whether people are vaccinated or not vaccinated. Does Omicron cause more severe illness? That jury's still out. Honestly, it's going to take another couple weeks as numbers are spiking throughout the world and within the country. We will then see how it contributes to morbidity and mortality, hospitalizations, and deaths. So will vaccines work against Omicron? So the current vaccines are expected to protect against severe illness, hospitalizations, and death, whether that's due to Omicron or any of the other variants that are out there. However, breakthrough infections are likely to occur, but just like with the other variants, including Delta, we have seen time and time again that vaccines are safe, very effective, and they're very effective at preventing severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. Are there treatments particularly aimed towards Omicron? We don't have anything just yet. Scientists are still working with regards to the best ways to treat people who have active infections. However, I just want to remind everybody, the best treatment is prevention because if you don't get the virus, then you don't have to worry about that. With regards to other tools that are available to fight Omicron variant and any of the other variants that are out there, vaccines remain the best public health measure to protect and to slow transmission, and also to reduce the likelihood of new variants emerging. So masks offer protection against all variants as well, and the CDC continues to recommend wearing masks in public indoor settings in areas of substantial higher community transmission, regardless of vaccination status. And tests, tests are another way to find out how this virus is spreading, so if you have symptoms, be sure to get tested. Moving along onto the influenza, we are in flu season, so if you haven't received a flu vaccine yet, now would be a good time. Thankfully, current status of flu rates is at about the baseline of what we would expect to see this year. This is a graph looking at 2017 and projected all the way until next year, and what we'll see is these huge spikes in red in 2017 through 2020. After that time in 2020, we've implemented a large part of these public health safety measures, distancing, masking, testing, and as you can see, those red lines are pretty much below the standard baseline. So this is just some assessment that masking, washing hands, staying home when you're sick, and keeping your distance is effective at not only reducing COVID, but also other viruses. So some key points, yes, influenza remains low nationally, but it is continuing to increase slightly. The majority of the influenza that we're seeing right now is amongst the young, five to 24, and we're seeing influenza A type of infections. But I remember other what we call influenza-like illnesses or respiratory illnesses that have been upticking in the community, and we're starting to see a lot of other viruses that aren't even necessarily usually common for this time of the year, RSV amongst those. This is a good time to, again, remind everybody, an annual flu vaccine is the best way to protect against the flu and its potentially serious complications. And talk to your doctor about any type of antiviral flu drugs that might be used to help treat the flu if you do get it. This is just some data that I printed yesterday from the CDPH. Despite our numbers being low, there have been three deaths attributed to the flu in October. We have not seen any outbreaks thus yet. Our labs are yielding a 2.1 positive rate, and thankfully, we have not seen any hospitalizations in the state with regards to flu, and our outpatient influenza-like illnesses are at expected levels thus far. So again, flu is low, but it is beginning to increase. Now is a good time to get your flu vaccine. RSV is kind of high unusually for this time of the year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ramiroz. Mr. Archer, did you have anything you wanted to add from a local perspective with our hospital?
Thanks, Corey. Good morning, everybody. So I don't have really too much to add in terms of flu. We've seen a few, but no major hospitalizations. We've seen a little bit more traffic in the ER with flu, but unfortunately, we are seeing a bit of an increase in COVID just this week. This morning, our hospital, since it's 10, and five of those patients are COVID-positive. Overall, it's a little, as was mentioned, it's a little lower acuity than what we've seen in the past with the Delta variant, but it has increased the traffic to the ER for sure. So I think, you know, precautionary steps and maintaining discipline with masking and all those things is the right way to go.
Okay. So with that, as we can hear, when we're talking about the impact on our hospital, the state of California has issued brand-new guidelines that will become effective tomorrow, December 15th. It will be in effect until January 15th, and the reason is truly to impact and reduce that weight on our hospital systems. There's three elements to the new guidelines. Universal masking for all public indoor patients, this is for all individuals regardless of vaccine status. We also see shortened timeframes for testing of those who are not vaccinated wishing to attend a mega event. A mega event would be a concert venue or any indoor venue with 1,000 people or more. Unvaccinated persons will now have a one-day window to get an antigen test or a two-day window to get a PCR test. Then the third element is travel. So if you leave the state of California for holiday travel or otherwise, as you return, the expectation and recommendation is that within three to five days of return, you do submit to a COVID test so that we can ensure we're not bringing any forms of COVID into the state of California. There's been a lot of questions around our vaccine and their access, so what we're going to do is walk you through the timeline of how we've been managing vaccine distribution in Calaveras County since December 2020. From March of this year to mid-August, the Public Health Department with our community partners and some mobile van administered almost 8,700 doses of COVID-19 vaccine, which is incredibly impressive. It was done over 56 clinics. It included community-based vaccine events, a mobile van, which wrapped for a limited period of time. We had a partnership with Mark Twain Medical and the mass clinics that you saw there at Frog Town at Angels Camp. The access and availability of the vaccine continually increased, and what we then found is that acceptance of vaccine plateaued. So unvaccinated, we are at 53% in Calaveras County. There is misinformation that continues to be spread around the vaccine, and the peak of the demand was in May of 2021 and declined then in June. So pharmacies and our federal partners through the VA and Indian Health Services also have options that continue to penetrate into our community to allow access for those vaccines, and they are being utilized by our residents. In mid-August, that mobile vaccination ban was deployed, and it came to our community as we were really a desert for access of services, but what happened was we saw 10 hours a day of support, six days a week. We did that until the end of November, and we administered 2,807 doses across 98 clinics through that avenue alone. However, it's generally vaccinations, you can see, there's about 32 a day, but now about three per hour. And in that timeframe, we spent $770,000 to make sure that we had that access. Public health funds were allowed by the California Department of Public Health and the CDC, and right now, that funding has run out. And right now, that funding has run up, and we are not yet given guidance from CDPH on whether or not any of our funding can shift into that, knowing that we have these other avenues to deliver the service. We're going to go into that fiscal question that might come from that comment in just a minute. Pediatric vaccines, super important. Those came down from CDC and CDPH as an expected delivery system through our community, through pediatricians, medical providers, pharmacies. The CDC approved those of being issued, and we received our first doses November 17th. Within a day, our partners had them, and we had now administered 140 doses to our five to 11-year-olds at this time. So where are we right now? We continue to test and offer testing to our community. Many vaccination options continue to exist. There are two sites in Valley Springs, the Health and Wellness and Sunrise Pharmacy. The Trowan County Fairgrounds continues to offer dual testing and vaccination. And here in Calaveras, we've got our CVS and Rite Aid partners. Just to get a glimpse as to what's available, on a Thursday, when we called for a Monday appointment, you can see here on the slide, we found 15 in Valley Springs, 27 options in Angels Camp. And that was just at CVS, plus another 25 and 28 in Jackson and Somar. You go to Rite Aid, we saw another five slots and an open time for walk-ins. And what's fascinating is that right now, when we're looking at those boosters, we, as of yesterday, have already given 6,800 boosters here in Calaveras County. And since the last of our van, we've continued to give over 1,000 boosters to our local residents. And those are all happening through those opportunities that are available. So as we transition through this pandemic, I want to remind everyone that for two years, our staff has been almost completely dedicated to the COVID response, really to make sure that our community can get a halt and move forward through this. But that's meant that we've had to put a lot of public health programs on hold, with the exception of those things that are mandated. But we continue to say that vaccination is the answer, and that is something that each individual can choose. Those vaccinations continue to be available. And right now, we're just continuing to seek out opportunities to continue to serve our community through grants, other vaccination efforts, incentivization, and things of that nature. Moving forward, we have made this pivot to now create a COVID response team within public health and give the opportunity for some of our other public health services to rise up and really start to meet that really long-term need. We're seeing a dramatic increase in communicable diseases other than COVID. We have to continue to see and serve families through the California Children's Services, the Child Health and Disability Prevention, with lead poisoning, car seat safety, and this goes on and on. So COVID vaccination continues to transition to the local healthcare provider system, as is any other standard vaccine. So with that, I do want to remind our community, we continue to have those walk-in testing sites and drive-through testing sites. For the month of December, you can see a smattering of opportunities in copper, sand, dress, both walk-up and drive-through. And with that, if you do still need to get your booster, please go to myturn.ca.gov. And with this ad, I want to pose your opportunity to ask questions of our medical team before we shift to the fiscal update.
Ms. Callaway, may I go first?
Thank you.
Dr. Ramirez, the Omicron variant, the CDC has reported that, you know, this was this weekend that I was hearing this. So things could have changed going the last three days. But that 75% of positive tests for it are vaccinated. So, and you're saying we're still finding out the effectiveness or how Omicron's affecting us? So are we waiting on whether we're going to find out how effective the vaccine is against the Omicron variant?
So we do know that the Omicron variant and the vaccine, the vaccine is very effective against the Omicron variant. You have to ask yourself, though, what are you talking about in terms of effectiveness? Does effectiveness mean that people are dying and going to the hospital who are vaccinated? No, they're not. The other thing, there's so many elements to this. The people who are vaccinated, are they also more likely to be tested? What we do know is that the vaccine's effectiveness does wane over time, which is why we all recommend boosters. If it's been more than six months since you've received your vaccine, then if you're 18 and over, it is recommended that you receive a booster. So these vaccines have now been around for more than six months. So there are some people who only got one of two of the mRNA vaccines or just a single Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So if you label yourself as vaccinated, and it's been more than six months, then yes, you're probably going to get sick again, just like with the flu, where with the flu, you need to get your flu vaccine every year. So to allude that the people who are 75% of the people with Omicron variant who are vaccinated, that's only one piece to the puzzle. Again, we do know that the vaccine is safe and effective, and it's most effective if you've had the vaccine within the past six months.
Ah, yeah. That brings me to the next point. It seems like, you know, now with the boosters coming forward and the effective, you know, the six-month length as opposed to what they originally said, it seems like Groundhog Day. Every time we move five yards forward, the goalpost moves five yards ahead of us. I don't know when we're going to be able to catch up with this at the rate we're going. Ms. Callaway?
The hard part, to answer to that question is, we will catch up to it when everybody is on the same page. If we are not all on the same page, it's going to be like a Roomba picking up something that your animal might have left on the carpet. It's just going to continue over and over and over again. If we don't have people that are listening to the advice and not wearing masks, not distancing, not testing, not vaccinating, then this is going to continue.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Ms. Callaway, do you want to follow up on his product on the carpet comment?
Mr. Archer, when someone enters the hospital, and I'm assuming you test them for COVID, does that test determine the type of infection that they have, only that they have it?
No, we don't have the capability to test for a specific variant only if you're positive for COVID-19.
And Mr. Archer, the people that go into the hospital for COVID, what percentage would you say are vaccinated versus unvaccinated?
It's probably 95 to 98% unvaccinated.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, I think I might have three for you. One, from what I thought I heard you say, we don't know if we'll get the medical team back. So it's your staff that is out in the communities doing the testing?
Yes, we continue to test and have continued to do since the departure of the COVID.
Okay. And you're doing vaccinations out also with your team?
The vaccinations are shifted to CVS, Rite Aid, and the Health and Wellness Center and other sites, both in Trowan and in Anador Counties.
Okay. Do you have, since your staff has been mostly shifted to the COVID response, do you have enough staff? I mean, not that I would ever ask a department head that silly question, but do you have this?
I always appreciate the question, Ms. Callaway, because no, we do not have enough staff. It is virtually impossible to find and recruit nurses, public health nurses. And you can imagine some of the factors that go into that. The world has been somewhat toxic towards those that have been imposing on their sense of well-being around their freedoms. And when we have a pandemic, like the COVID-19 pandemic, our job is to help people recognize those things that they can do in order to mitigate spread. And so there's great impact to people. The pay disparities between working in a hospital setting, working in any other setting than in a public health setting is far greater. So I could go on and on, but yeah, you've heard me say repeatedly the difficulty in finding epidemiologists and the funding to do that. So thank you for bringing the question up.
And one more. On testing, one, the state's going to shorter timeframes. But when I've had a test, it takes usually three days. And that's been fine. But one, is the capability out there to then reduce the result to two days? And two, is there a mechanism in the county to do rapid testing?
So rapid tests are not being available to local health jurisdictions. And that is why we refer people to see that locally and at their local pharmacy, should there be any. It's just not something that's been put to the local health jurisdictions to have. The testing window is really only for mega events. Mega events are typically voluntary participatory activities. So deciding to go to a concert venue, for instance. And so if the state of California and their laboratories do not have the capacity to meet that window, then it really urges people to consider getting vaccinated should they decide to take on those activities.
So when we were at the conference a week or two ago, they were doing rapid testing. It didn't seem like you just needed the equipment. Is there a way that's possible for Calaveras?
Yeah, so what that tells me is that the conference holders, the persons that were putting that conference on, took that bill and decided that it was worth the, that it was corporate, nonprofit, whatever that entity is, would have made that decision to purchase those tests to allow access to that voluntary event.
So that I understand. But is it such a high expense that we couldn't do that? Or in partnership with Mark Twain, do that? Or with Rite Aid or CVS?
I would need someone else to respond to that. Other than Mr. Archer, if you have a sense of what that testing would cost. I did attend a second conference this year where it was so exorbitant that they opted out of doing a rapid test. So it just, I just don't have those dollar figures. But, Dr. Archer, if you have that?
No, I actually, I don't have the cost specifically for that. Yeah.
Corey, I have some insight into this. So a couple of things. One is, we, in the county, we use the Valencia lab that's located in Southern California. We have created a new system where the tests are actually picked up by the state every day. And so that transportation has increased the return for our tests. So most people are getting them back a lot quicker now. And regarding rapid or antigen tests, the state has decided to utilize those resources for school and are giving antigen or offering antigen tests to schools. I think it is important to remember that people can still, on their own, if they want to, go to places to pick up antigen tests. They can go to Costco, they can go to CVS, they can go to wherever. And if there are always supply chain issues, I think everyone is aware of that. But as far as the state's supply, they are deciding to give those to school districts, which I think makes the most sense. Thank you, Corey.
Ms. Callaway, can I follow up on that real quick?
No, just one more. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I just want to follow up on that. Ms. Callaway's rapid testing question. Does the ELC enhancing detection funding qualify for that?
We will absolutely answer the questions around ELC funding in just a moment when we come to our medical access.
I get that, Ms. Allen. I put the question forward right now. Can you answer it? Is that qualify underneath the ELC enhancing funding?
Marcus Munoz, can you rise up?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stopper. At this moment, I have not looked in to see if that qualifies. We would have to modify our plan and work with the state to see if we can get that approval for something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Were you done with your questioning, Ms. Callaway?
Okay, any other further questions by board members? Go ahead and proceed, Ms. Allen.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. If it's okay with your board, I was going to allow Dr. Ramirez and Mr. Archer to leave the meeting so they can get back to their business, if that's okay? Okay. So, hold on, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Munoz to go through our fiscal update. Thank you.
Morning, board, members of the public. My name is Marcus Munoz. I'm the Assistant Director here at Calaveras Health and Human Services, and I'll be providing the COVID-19 fiscal update. The purpose of this fiscal update is to provide the board with the overall snapshot on where we are with the funding that has been allocated to us. So here we go. All right, so we have received two pots of funding. Both are called ELC. The first was enhancing detection funding. This funding was, the first round was $1,716,379. This was intended for the use in order to detect COVID through testing, data reporting, and contact tracing. One thing to note is this funding was initially allocated prior to there being an approved vaccine. And that's why it is good to know what the intention of it was. Again, it was through testing, data reporting, and contact tracing. The second round of funding we received is ELC expansion funding. We received this in January of 2021. This was in the amount of just under $2.1 million. And one thing to note is this funding was intended to enhance upon the enhancing detection funds, or I should say expand on the enhancing detection funds, as well as address areas not addressed. And more specifically, the one big change that happened was we now have an approved emergency use authorization for a vaccine. So next slide, please, Corey. All right, so I'm going to start with the enhancing detection funds. This is the $1.716,379. So when we were given the money, we were also told we had specific strategies. And these strategies, along with these strategies, we were provided a specific budget for each strategy. The overall budget, we could not modify. However, we could work within each of those budgets to determine our plan. This came along with a 30-month spending period from May 18th, 2020, through November 17th of 2022. And as of right now, we are 69% of the way spent. We are 62% of the way through the funding period, which means we are on pace to fully expend by November of 2022. Budget modifications are allowed. So we submitted a spending plan. The state does allow us to modify that. Of course, we have to get state approval each time we do that, but it is allowed. So jumping into these strategies, what are the strategies? The strategy number one is increasing workforce. So in other words, it is increasing staffing surrounding the other strategies. So strategy four, that is specific to data monitoring and reporting. We also have strategy five, which is our contact tracing program. And then we have strategy six, which is essentially engaging with our community partners. It's around health equity. It's around infection prevention, as well as prevention activities and testing. Strategies two and three, Calaveras County did not qualify for those. Those required an actual lab to be in our county. So therefore, we did not receive funding for strategies two and three. So here's a quick snapshot of our budget, based on categories, where our budget was, what we have. our budget was, um, what we have spent, slashed, encumbered, and what percentage that is to date. So as you can see, um, we have spent 72% of our salary and benefits budget. Um, and our overall budget amongst all categories, we have spent 69%. So the ELC expansion funds, this is the second round we received, just under $2.4 million. Um, so fiscally, this is not confined to specific strategies. What I mean by that is in the first round, in the enhancement funds, the state gave us a budget. They said, you're given X dollars for your contact tracing program. Um, in this strategy, while we are still confined to strategies, it actually, uh, does not box us down how much we can spend on those strategies. So if I need to allocate more to the contact tracing program, it's up to, uh, us, public health, to de- determine how much of that $2.4 million can go to that strategy. Uh, this had a 29.5-month spending period. So as of, uh, November 30th, we are 43% of the way, uh, spent, and we are 36% of the way through that funding period. Uh, one thing to note is, um, the expansion funds, because they came about, um, after the, uh, approval of the, the emergency approval of the vaccine, they were allowed, uh, for activities, uh, such as vaccination. An example of this is the, um, expenses we incurred at opening the Frogtown site, uh, the mass vaccination clinic. Um, and also with this one, budget modifications are allowed. We are allowed, uh, again, with state approval, uh, to modify, um, our budget and our spend plan. And here is a, a snapshot of our expansion funding. To date, we, again, we are 43% of the way spent through 36% of the funding period. And as you can see on our categories of the salaries and benefits, 39% of the way, uh, spent through those. So moving forward, what are our next steps? Uh, one, review the budget. Budgets are initially created based on a, a point in time, um, and seeing how, uh, COVID-19 is fluid, things change. And so we are constantly looking at our budget, um, making adjustments as necessary, working with the state to get approvals, and that does not change moving forward. We need to continue to review our budget and do that. Additionally, we need to project out needs through June of 2023. That is the funding period of the expansion. Uh, while we are on pace to fully expend the funds by June of 2023, um, that is a straight-line projection, um, but as you know, COVID-19 is fluid. Uh, there may be surges, there may be lulls. We have to, uh, look at the situation and have contingencies on how to address it if each of those happen. Right now, 73% of our remaining funds are in salaries and benefits. And so we need to project in order to make sure that we have appropriate staffing, um, in order to, uh, address this pandemic. So that is the presentation I have today. I am open to any, uh, questions surrounding the fiscal update.
That wraps our presentation. We're over the questions.
To, to follow up on the first question, the ELC enhancing funds are more, uh, more restrictive, but the expansion funding's a little, little more open to what you can use them for, from what I understand. So could, could a rapid testing thing be put forward through the expansion funding?
We can definitely explore that option and, and work with the state to see, um, what the costs are, um, if it's even available, and if we can get approval. Currently, we have a spend plan, um, so we would just have to work with the state to modify that spend plan. I'm not sure exactly what the cost is. Again, we would dive into that cost and, and lay out, um, the pros and cons of moving forward in that direction.
Understood. Also, uh, these funds are able to be used for vaccinations. You said you used part of these for, uh, for the Frogtown vaccination clinics? So if at any time we want to use a mobile setup again, and the state's not providing direct funds for the mobile setup, this could be a way to backfill that during those times?
Uh, we could. The mobile van is roughly $55,000, which is a, a big chunk of change. So we would have to definitely dive into our budget, see where we can actually extract that funding to move it. Uh, additionally, the mobile van, um, we currently did not pay for it out of these funds. Uh, we used a different pot of funding that had run out. So we are also in talks with the state right now, uh, currently exploring other funding sources, uh, that may be used of that, so we don't impact, um, these current budgets. But, uh, to answer your question directly, yes, we can definitely explore that realm.
I want to call up on at least $55,000, that's per week.
Per week, yes. $55,000 per week.
That, that makes more sense. You know, a chunk of change show in the overall picture on $2 million, that adds up quickly. Thank you.
If there's, is there Mr. Garmody? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both very much for the presentation. A quick question. This comes back to the mobile van. There seems to be some confusion. Didn't we purchase a mobile van?
We do, we, we did, um, we do have in the budget a mobile van. Currently, that's in the build stage. Um, we are still awaiting for that, uh, purchase, the build to be complete. As of this moment, it has not been completed.
Cause that was, that was, I remember we as a board approved that. Which pot of money does that come out of?
Uh, that came out of the ELC enhancing detection funds.
So number two?
That, that was the first round of, uh, funding we received.
Okay. We've got roughly, sorry, here's, second, Marcus. Uh, we've got roughly $400,000 of, uh, equipment. Uh, those are capital assets, I'm assuming, to the county.
Yes.
You want to unpack that a little bit, just since we now own it?
Absolutely. Uh, so the equipment category, um, in the enhancing detection funds, that was the first round. We have the, uh, mobile van that was just discussed. We also have an information or informatics dashboard, um, and that is in the enhancing detection funds. In the second round of funding, the expansion funding, um, that is two, um, emergency shelters, uh, that were purchased with those dollars. And that sums up the total equipment budget.
Okay. So we got the van, and the van's going to be on our books forever, as long as we can find people to staff it.
Yes.
And that could serve a lot of our communities in the future, pandemic or otherwise. I'm, I'm assuming dental clinics, all the other things that public health does, this will be a useful asset.
Yes.
Okay.
Information is just about.
And the...
Yeah, so, so thank you, um, for asking about that, Supervisor Garmody. So the initial intent, um, with the mobile van was obviously to, um, utilize it for the COVID response, um, that with supply chain issues and, and different, uh, workforce issues that the, that everyone is having, we've ordered, um, the mobile van. Uh, we have not received that yet. However, the intention was also that we would utilize that van post-COVID for exactly what you're talking about. We had actually even started, um, a partnership with Mark Twain and Valley Springs Health and Wellness to, to, um, take the mobile van to all parts of the county and have, um, all sorts of different services available. All of our health education services, even, um, we even started talking about, um, ax- having the availability to access appointments for folks, um, to be able to get medical and behavioral health care. Um, and so once we get that van, that will help us kind of get back to the work, um, of public health beyond just COVID. Um, and I also wanted to clarify with those two emergency shelters. Um, those are, um, drive-through shelters, and those will allow us, um, they're quite large, and, and when we, um, will be practicing setting those up soon, and we can invite you out to come and see them. But they will be instrumental, um, in us responding to the next pandemic that happens, or, um, the next flu outbreak, or the next, you know, fill in the blank that happens. So I just wanted to clarify those two things.
That, that's great. I really value that we're, you know, taking this horrible crisis and trying to build for the future as well. And, uh, you know, certainly up in my district, access to healthcare is always lacking, especially this time of year. And so, um, I look, you know, assuming we could get the bodies to staff it, um, that's great to hear. Thank you very much, Corey.
Thank you, Marcus. Further board questions?
Public comment?
Yes, may I, Vicky Ranki?
Ms. Ranki?
Yes, um, hi. Good morning. I just have a couple of questions. Unfortunately, one of them has, or maybe both, would be answered best by the doctors, but, um, let me, um, present those two questions. One is, I never heard any discussion of protocol for someone who has been diagnosed with COVID, um, at home. I know what happens when they get to the hospital, so I'd like to have that presented. Um, what is the protocol for people at home with COVID? And then also the vaccination of children. I would also like to see a presentation of the data that supports that children need to be vaccinated. Um, remember, this is an emergency use vaccination. It's not been proven in children. It's, could be very dangerous. So, um, I would like that to be presented as well. And, um, some of my other questions were already answered by the questions by the board, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ranki. We do have Dr. Ramirez, uh, here on the call.
Vaccines are safe and effective across all age groups. There is an abundance of data on the CDC website. Number one. Number two, with regards to protocols, protocols imply, uh, are, are you referring to medical care or medical treatment? Because the majority of people who get COVID are able to recover without incident. The vast majority of people do not need to seek medical services, but those people who are infected with COVID, they should remain home and separate themselves from others so that they do not infect other people. And that's when we start talking about quarantine, isolate, and isolating, uh, people. Um, if you do have any questions regarding treatments of COVID, it is best to reach out to your doctor initially as a phone call, because different doctors, different offices, different places have different protocols in place for how they will, uh, see and treat patients. Some are done online, uh, virtually with the camera, some are done in person with proper equipment, personal protective equipment in place.
And then I, this is Colleen. I just wanted to also add, um, that, thank you, Vicky, for those questions. Um, if folks can pick up their phone when our contact tracers and investigators call, um, one of the, the, um, things that, that those folks do is to kind of walk through, um, what the recommendations are in terms of, um, isolating yourself, um, or contacting your primary care provider. Um, they don't give out medical information or guidance, because that's really between you and your primary care provider. But if folks can pick up their phones, uh, when we call, that's always appreciated also.
Further public comment?
There is no further public comment.
Anybody, uh, present that would like to comment or have any questions? With that, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no questions, I'm going to thank everyone for the... Oh, Mr. Toffinelli?
I do have one question, and I apologize for not asking it earlier. Corey, you and I had a discussion yesterday on the phone about boosters?
Yes.
And we have all these numbers that, that are, um, vaccinations given to both young and old, some of them dating back starting in January. Um, and, and it's recommended you get a booster after six months. Do we have any figures at all? Is anybody keeping any figures on the number of booster shots? And shouldn't that be added to these numbers as to what percentage we have of people getting booster shots? Does the state keep track of that, or any of that information?
Yes, Supervisor Toffinelli, I'll draw your attention to slide 15, uh, in your pocket, that's titled COVID-19 Vaccine Timeline, uh, where we are now with boosters. And it does reflect since, as of yesterday, how many boosters have been given, 6,836. And those are to individuals who identify as living within Calabres County. And in the month of December, so within 13 days, 1,004 boosters were given.
Can, can we add that to this front sheet on our next update, the number where we're at booster-wise? I'd appreciate it.
Sure can. Thank you.
Further board questions or comments? With that, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all.
We've done recognitions and acknowledgements already, so I'll move to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board of supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Good morning. My name's Jennifer. I'm in District Two. I do have a public comment about the overall general presentation of government, and there's like no other answer for any of the things that pres- are presented to us, like through this COVID thing. The fear of not being vaccinated or not getting your booster and all of that stuff, when there's... I'm a Christian, and God is in control of all of this. And we have a Bible that gives us instruction about how to take care of our bodies. It even says, "You are perfectly and wonderfully fearfully made." And so for us to, to look for man for answers when it is in our Bibles for, um, comfort and understanding, and to go there, in the first five books of the Bible, it's all of the commandments that God has given us. The moral law, the, the Ten Commandments of the Bible that it says, "Don't kill anybody, don't, don't lie, don't..." You know, all that stuff. And that's what government was, uh, designed to be. And in, here in the United States, we're in a place, thank heaven, that our founding fathers recognized that the Bible was the source document. And when they said, "There should be a, an understanding every year to come back to the Bible and recognize where the, the beginning are, where the trust has to come from." There's, it, it, 365 references of "Have no fear." And it, we come to government and we see nothing but fear. And then there is never supposed to be anything more than 10% in, in taxes taken for government, uh, operations, because the tithe for God is 10%. And we should never do anything dedicated or as an idol more impressive than what God is, is responsible for. So I look at these, the numbers that were spent of taxes that was allocated to this COVID response, and how our county, our personnel in our county, which is actually a pretty Christian county, I'm, I'm proud to say, we have a lot of people that come to our church, that tax money came from all of the people in the United States that paid taxes. And so we get allotted this chunk of money, and you can't get people to take it. You can't get people to answer the phones when, when, um, the county health department calls and says, "We're tracking and tracing." If it says that on my phone, I'm not picking it up. There's, there's such a resistance to government overreach when we should be going back to the Bible. Even in Joshua, it says, "Every year, the government should look at the Bible and recognize its, its function." Its function was written in the first five books of the Bible, and God is always superior. God is always the one. So if people get fearful, we should be looking at going to the, the Word, finding out what He says is to relax. If, if anybody in the county is looking for a place to get comfort and understanding and relief from all of this fear, come to church. There's people there who are okay, and you can get an understanding of how the, our bod- bodies were designed to fight this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Anything online? Oh!
Is this the time, excuse me, is this the time to comment on item 21 or later?
No. And I, I spelled that out when I read the, the general public comment thing. It's, it's in the agenda also. It's in the agenda also, Allison. Thank you.
There's no further public online comment?
Very good. Just one more chance. Anybody in the audience have anything that's not on the agenda? With that, I think we'll take a 10-minute break. Welcome back. Before going in... Oh, we're getting a little feedback. Can we clear that up real quick? Are we good? Okay. Prior to going to consent agenda, I want to let everyone know, talking with staff, we've decided to punt Item 21 possibly to next year, after January, sometime in January, possibly. Time to be determined for a broader discussion. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Are there any board members that would like to pull any items off the consent agenda? Is there anybody from staff that would like to pull an item? Public?
There are no online public requests.
Okay. And I assume somebody in the audience would speak up if there's an item they would like to pull. So with that, I'll entertain a motion on the entire balance of the consent agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Garimindi. We have a motion by Mr. Garimindi.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Toffinelli. All those in favor? I. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Regular agenda. Informational item. Economic and community development. Receive a presentation by NEO Connect regarding Central Sierra Broadband Roadmap Project. Ms. Galino.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic Development Director. And today I have a presentation from NEO Connect, which is the consultant that the five-county region, through the Central Sierra Economic Development District, is putting together for our broadband roadmap. And I believe I have both Cole Prisabella online as well as Diane Kraus. And I would like to go ahead and introduce, I think Cole wanted to say a little something first, so I'll turn it over to him.
Good morning, Board. Chairman Stoppard, Cole Prisabella. I am the Director of Innovation and Business Assistance in the County of Tuolumne, the counterpart to Kathy in Tuolumne in economic development. Back in June of 2019, the County of Tuolumne, on behalf of the five-county Central Sierra Region, put together an Economic Development Administration grant request for $500,000 as an outcome of the Central Sierra Broadband Conference we had in early 2019 before the pandemic. And one of the biggest things that we found out of that conference was, as a region, the way that we could help the most was to do some sort of broadband action plan and look at our policies and procedures. And so that's what we did with this $500,000 grant. NEO Connect is our primary consultant who will assist, and we received three other bids with one other bid selected to do public outreach specifically for the youth and seniors 65-plus in our community that may not have direct broadband access and whose voices typically may not be heard when we're asking questions about broadband. With that, I'm really excited for, excuse me, feeling a little sick today, Diane to get started, and thank you.
Thank you, Cole.
Thank you, Cole, and good morning, everybody. My name is Diane Cruz. I'm the CEO of NEO Connect, and as Cole mentioned, we're the consulting firm that was selected to help you all put together a broadband roadmap. And now is a perfect time to be doing this because, in response to the pandemic, there's a lot of funding that's available both at the federal and state level for improving broadband services. I have a presentation. Is it possible to put that on the screen, or would you like me to do that? Either way works for me.
Diane, I'll go ahead and stream it for you. I've got it here just a sec.
Okay, great. So while that's being put up, I think I have 20 minutes, so I'm going to jump into the agenda and what we're going to talk about. So I just want to talk about what activities are underway and give a sense of a timeline for the broadband planning activities. And then I'll be talking about the current broadband landscape in the county, what can be done. And as I mentioned, the timing of this is perfect in that we're hoping to align the needs with the funding opportunities that are becoming available. Could you go to the third slide? Oh, there we are. Okay. So as Cole mentioned, we started the project and kicked it off in September of this year. And some of the foundational work that has been done is we're gathering GIS data on areas that are served with broadband service, are not served, and are underserved. And so we're gathering this information and we're mapping it. We're also mapping key anchor institutions like our national parks and hospitals and schools and government facilities. Most of those, the schools are connected with broadband. However, those institutions are key because they're often the largest broadband users in the county. And we're pulling speed test data and also pulling information on where there's existing fiber optic facilities in the county. We also are identifying then what the current needs are and where those needs are located in the county. And this GIS and mapping data really provides the foundation for us to start desktop engineering on identifying what the capital cost would be to improve broadband service. And that's what we're doing now. So in December, which is our month now, we're putting together capital cost projections. We will provide these on a district basis. We were somewhat delayed in putting this information together because we were waiting on district maps to be finalized. I know that they are. Throughout the five-county region, we're putting together capital cost projections and putting together various levels of investment that the county could consider or that the county could look at potential partnerships to access funding that's available. We anticipate that we'll have a written plan and strategies and our recommendations in the January to February timeframe. As Cole mentioned, there's another firm that has been working with us and is providing outreach activities. We're about to kick off a survey for citizens, and this other firm is focusing on youth and seniors in the five-county region to gain input from residents and citizens on their current experience of broadband and why it's important and where there are areas that need to be addressed. You can go to the next slide. So what does it look like here in the county? So first of all, before I jump into what the maps are telling us, I need to lay the foundation that often these maps are notoriously incorrect and do not reflect the accurate picture of how bad broadband service is in an area. The maps are notoriously incorrect in that they rely on data that is submitted on a quarterly basis by the existing service providers. And the data that they submit is typically on a census block basis, where if there's one address within a census block that they can say has broadband, then they're able to say that the entire census block has broadband. And this is kind of a national discussion. We know that the maps need to be improved, and I think there's a number of things that are underway to try and improve the maps. The other reason why these maps are usually difficult and inaccurate is that the service providers are able to submit that an area is served if it's advertised as served, so rather than what people are actually getting at their homes or businesses in terms of service. California also has a very low bar. So the federal government has a bar of 25 megabits per second in download speeds and 3 megabits per second in upload speeds. And we know that that's a very low bar, and we know that especially if you're working at home and if you have kids attending school at home, if you're trying to do a video conference with a medical appointment, that standard of 25 by 3, saying that you do a broadband service, is an old standard and it needs to be improved. The state of California has a goal where all residents within the state will have access to 100 by 100 megabits per second. And the information that we'll be putting forward is a path to get you to what the gold standard is, which is 1,000 by 1,000 megabits per second in service. We're only seeing broadband demand get larger every year, so the broadband demand is doubling every one to two years. And especially with stay-at-home orders, one month after the pandemic hit, we saw residential broadband service jump by 92% at households. And so these are old standards. I guess the good news is that the mapping data shows that there are a lot of areas that could be improved within the county. If we zoomed in on the mapping data, which I know this map that we're showing on the screen does not provide, but if we zoomed in on the areas that are really severely lacking service, we would see that Porter, West Point, Railroad Flat, those areas, over 30% of the population lacks the low standard of 25 by 3 megabits per second in service, and followed by the Sherman Acres, Dorrington, Big Trees area, those are also areas that need to improve broadband service. There is 14% of the population in Calaveras that have no broadband service at all. And so again, we want to try to re-frog these standards, and at the end of the day, our recommendations will be towards giving you a path towards what's referred to as gigabit service or 1,000 by 1,000 megabits per second in service. If you can go to the next slide. What can be done? So I often tell counties that, you know, there's a large spectrum in terms of what you can do. So unless our local government, you could do everything, meaning, and the Everything Plan is every house and every business within the county would get fiber. That's often very expensive, especially in an area of the country where there's undulating terrain, where there's rock, and where there's lots of trees. That's a very expensive plan. So the reason why these areas don't have sufficient broadband is it's hard to do, it's expensive to do. So on one hand, there's the Do Everything Plan, which is building fiber to every home and business. And on the other hand, there's a Do Nothing Plan, and just leave it up to the existing service providers to improve services. And what I like to recommend and work with various local governments is that there's 100 different, what I call, Do Something plans. And I'm going to walk through a couple of those things that you could do to help improve broadband. One of the biggest things that you can do that is sort of low-hanging fruit and not very expensive is to have good policies in place that are broadband-friendly. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those important policies are and what facilitates more broadband infrastructure being done. But I often say too that in creating a roadmap that the service providers can access, and that's the point and the goal of this process, is to not necessarily replace what the existing service providers are doing, but instead facilitate better broadband and better information in working with the service providers, is provide tools that the service providers can use. So things like, where do we have existing conduit in the county? Where do we have existing fiber? What are the capital improvement plans and roadwork plans that are being anticipated? Can we put in conduit when these capital improvement plans are being executed? How can we build what's referred to as middle-mile infrastructure? And I often give the association of middle-mile infrastructure in broadband service is very similar to when you're building a water system. You need to have good access to water supply in order to offer water to residents. Same thing with broadband service. Losing my voice already. Same with broadband service, where you need to have good access to internet supply. So internet supply is often where there are major internet data centers. It's often along major highways to build middle-mile infrastructure to get access to internet supply. And then last-mile infrastructure is often, you know, from the road or a distribution network to the home or to the business. That's often referred to as last mile. And that is where you would build fiber to every home and every business. We've had a lot of success across the country in developing public-private partnerships or private-private partnerships, where when you can work with the existing service providers by facilitating them to build out further infrastructure, and you can also work with others. So things like working at the power company or cell phone companies or Caltrans to work together to put broadband infrastructure within your communities. I'll give a great example of a project where we were working in a very similar terrain in Colorado, where there were six counties that were working together to try to improve broadband. And there wasn't a good business plan to implement fiber because it was low population, low population density. To build fiber to every community within these six counties, it would have cost anywhere from 50 to 75 million dollars. There was only one provider, and that one provider's service kept going down. When their network would go down, they would lose cell phone service, they would lose banking, credit card authorizations, emergency services. And there wasn't a good path to try to figure out how to make a business plan work with a $75 million spend. What we ended up doing is we reached out to several power companies that were building fiber between their substations to help with their power management systems. And we convinced the power companies to provide as an in-kind asset, fiber to this project to improve broadband. And then that took the cost from 75 million down to 17. And then the various counties grouped together and applied for grant funding. They were awarded funding from EDA and from the state of Colorado to reduce the cost down to 3 million. And so what they ended up doing at the end of the day is building a very robust, middle-mile fiber infrastructure connecting all of the communities within the six counties. That would have cost 50 to 75 million, they were able to spend 3 million to build this network. So I'm a big proponent on, let's get the power users, if you will, to the table, and let's work on partnerships to work together to improve broadband. And we are hoping to do that in your five-county region as well. Go to the next slide. So I mentioned that policies are kind of a low-hanging fruit, a good way to improve broadband services, but you don't have to spend a lot of money on that. One of the most important policies is a dig-once policy or a shadow conduit policy. And that is just essentially when there is work being done in the roadway, where either another utility provider is putting in infrastructure, or if you're doing any road improvements, where you might have an open trench, what makes a lot of sense is to just allow for the ability to put in a shadow conduit that would be put in place while the trench is open or while the work is being done or while somebody else is putting in infrastructure. And in a report to you, we provide key routes that show where you should look at putting in a shadow conduit, that if there's an opportunity to do so, please do that. It costs anywhere from 25 up to 45 dollars a foot. It costs anywhere from 25 up to $45 a foot to open up a trench to put in fiber. So $45 a foot is very expensive. If you have an open trench and you can put in conduit, it reduces the cost down to about $5 a foot. And so that's a really key, important policy to put in place to help reduce the cost of broadband infrastructure. Another thing that you want to also do is you want to make sure that you have a good budget set aside that as these opportunities come available, you have the budget available and set aside to put in conduit. And we also need to include the municipalities in this discussions because it's just as important that the municipalities have this type of policy in place as well. When we provide deliverable, and we're happy to do it beforehand, we'll provide sample language that you can include as a policy or ordinance that allows you to put in shadow conduit and just pay for the incremental expense of doing so. Next slide, please. So I mentioned, you know, why do we put in good middle mile infrastructure fiber along the major distribution and highways within the county? So it allows us to have access to internet supply. But really, more importantly, it reduces the cost to get that internet supply. So internet service providers often will not serve the more remote and rural areas because number one, they might not have a very good business plan for return on investment because of low population density or, you know, low population in general. But oftentimes too, the cost for that back haul or that cost for that middle mile to access internet supply is based upon a per-mileage basis. And so if you've got 100 miles that you have to traverse in order to get access to internet supply, that's a high operating expense for the internet service providers. And then that further complicates their return on investment in their model. And so by putting in middle mile infrastructure, you're reducing that cost for back haul and transport. One of the good things that the state of California is doing is they have a $6 billion budget for broadband in response to the pandemic. And a large portion of that is going to be working with Caltrans and other stakeholders in the state to put in middle mile infrastructure. Now, they haven't made those announcements yet, but there are plans to potentially look at specific routes. And the next slide has where there's existing middle mile infrastructure and what's possibly being planned. In the region, there is a network that is primarily used for education. It's referred to as the SCENIC fiber network. And that is a network that connects higher education and K through 12. It's a government in research network that has been put together and has been put in place. And the map that is on the left where it shows the blue line going through the southern parts of the counties is a network that SCENIC has in place today. And then the red lines are kind of SCENIC's wish list, if you will. By going north from Amador County, CDIN has expanded that fiber network north. And the map that's shown on the right is the map that is very similar to the wish list that SCENIC has. It is the map that the state is contemplating building middle mile infrastructure. I know some of you are meeting with Caltrans on different projects and Caltrans will be a key component of this. If there are meetings that are underway, I'd be happy to participate in those meetings with Caltrans and try to, you know, move it up on their priority list in terms of where they could potentially assist in putting in fiber infrastructure. But this is middle mile infrastructure. This is a good way that you could potentially participate in improving broadband services is to have discussions with Caltrans and the power company to joint builds, work with the state in getting middle mile infrastructure out to your communities. Next slide. So I mentioned that there's a lot of funding that's available in response to the pandemic. And this year with the American Rescue Plan Act, over $340 billion is available for broadband funding. And I have provided the different sources and buckets of funding that's available. The EDA has about $3 billion available for broadband. They primarily invest in middle mile infrastructure and you need to have a good economic development story. I know this program that we're implementing, the roadmap, much has been funded through the EDA for the planning activities. There's also the capital improvement project. And that's another 10 billion that is going to be administered through the Department of Treasury. That will be allocated on a state-by-state basis. And the state of California will have a large portion of that. E-Rate is a program that has traditionally funded schools and higher education for connecting schools and colleges, universities with fiber. That has received an additional 7.2 billion. And then probably the active discussion that you all might be having as your local fiscal recovery fund, counties and local governments can use that funding for water, wastewater and broadband services. And so that's a resource that the county could potentially use to invest in broadband services. And then there's also money that's set aside for the Native American tribes. Next slide. In addition to the $340 billion that's available, the state has set aside 6 billion and they have set it aside for various different programs. And then as you are probably well aware of, the infrastructure bill just recently passed and there's another $65 billion that's set aside for broadband with the infrastructure bill. A lot of that funding, the rules are being written now. And we anticipate that those programs will start being rolled out in the March-April timeframe. And so as I mentioned, the timing is good on this in that we plan to have our recommendations to you in the January-Febuary timeframe. We'll have projects, priorities and associated capital costs. And they'll also provide a list of the various funding programs, what they can be used for, what their due dates are, if you will, for grant funding, and who your potential partners could be in applying for some of that funding that's available. So with that, next slide. I will open it up for any questions that you all might have about what we're doing and what you might see in the January-Febuary timeframe.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana. Any questions by board members? Ms. Calloway.
Ms. Kraus, I have, could you go to slide four, please? That's the one with the current environment. Ms. Kraus, what is that area that doesn't show on the legend? That looks green, which is probably appropriate?
Okay. So that, so areas that are shown in green are areas that are served, meaning they have access to what the state's benchmark is. So served for the state is 10 by 1 megabits per second. And there are not a lot of areas in Calaveras that have service that are served.
Well, we, as in the Calaveras Board, wrote a letter of support to Alpine County to build that middle mile up in that area. We also have a lot of between communities, Forest Service land, Sierra Pacific land. And I'm wondering, how do we manage providing service to these pockets of communities that are interspersed between the Forest Service and Sierra Pacific industries?
So yes, it's tricky. So your question is how do we serve some of these remote areas? And I will say that a lot of these plans cannot be implemented all at once. It's usually the analogy is how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? What we would recommend and what we'll provide is we'll provide a number of priority areas in the state. So areas that have no service or are not, you know, meeting the 25 by 3 standard. And then we'll provide recommendations on how to serve those areas and who your partner should be, who you should be talking to to help improve services. That is definitely a challenge for some of these areas that are rural and geographically dispersed. As I mentioned, the reason why they don't have good broadband service today is because it's hard to do. It's expensive. So one bite at a time, we would recommend first of all, having good policies in place so that when there are opportunities that come available, put in conduit. The other is work with Caltrans and the power company on building infrastructure for middle mile. Work with the state, continue to provide letters of support to raise the awareness about lack of broadband services in these rural areas. So if the state can invest in middle mile infrastructure that can reach these areas, then it is easier for the service providers to build the last mile services to reach homes and businesses.
So that's assuming undergrounding. I mean, I've tried to work with Comcast for many years to service a fairly developed area and along the Highway 4 corridor. And it's all overhead. And they're saying there's no return on their investment. So I don't see how this happens without the partnership. As you pointed out earlier, the private sector employer, excuse me, providers to, otherwise for me, it's just more, no offense, more talk.
Sure. Yeah, I totally understand that. So I think what we're seeing now is we now have funding that's available. So you're right, there isn't a return on investment that Comcast could pencil out to invest in some of these communities or really any provider for that matter. And the reason why it doesn't pencil out is the back haul costs are expensive. We have lack of middle mile fiber infrastructure. And we have geographic dispersment. So homes and businesses are, you know, you might have really low density per mile of households. And so they're right, the service providers don't have an adequate return on investment and therefore they're not investing in these communities. Grant funding, on the other hand, completely changes the ballgame. So if grant funding is available to serve these areas where we can't get an adequate return on investment, you know, this is the time to invest in those areas. I'll give you sort of some other data points. The last time there was funding available at this type of magnitude in a stimulus program was back in the 2009, 2010 timeframe. And there was $7 billion that was set aside for broadband. And the SCENIC network was actually built with a lot of use of that funding. But 7 billion is just a drop in the bucket in terms of what funding is available now. So this type of funding does not come around very often. I think it's the, you know, largest investment that we will be able to access in infrastructure for multiple generations to come. And so I highly recommend that we use this funding that's available to try to improve broadband infrastructure so that most of the capital costs are paid through grant and funding programs. And that way, the service providers will have an adequate return on investment to serve these communities.
Thank you.
Any further board questions? Anything further you would like to proceed with the presentation? Or can I call for public comment?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Before I call for public comment, I just want to thank, we've been discussing this for quite some time through the Central Sierra Economic Development Agency, which is a five-county JPA, Amador, Alpine, Tuolumne, Calaveras, Mariposa. And I want to thank Cole. Cole has been picking up and beating the drum for us quite some time. He went and advocated for, this is pretty much like a planning grant, to move forward so we can put together our plan. I want to thank, thank you, Cole, for the work you've done for all five of our counties moving forward on this. This is the first step to be able to acquire and qualify for these funds as we move forward. So with that, I want Ms. Galena.
I just want to share that the beautiful thing about this program when we started with the five counties is they actually looked at Calaveras County's dig once policy. So we actually used that policy that was developed by our Public Works to establish kind of a pattern and a template for our other counties. So I just want to share that. And thank you, Public Works.
Yes. Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board for further questions. Mr. Guaramidi.
Mr. Chair, not so much a question, but a statement that in addition to this really great work which is going on, which will help us put the roadmap together, RCRC, which we're a member county of, has formed a joint powers association that we're all a part of. I voted on it. Golden State Connect Authority. I was elected chair of that authority last week. And hopefully we'll be able to get some projects moving. There's, this will allow us to tap into the federal dollars and the state dollars and bring in under that final mile. I like to think of it in terms of Caltrans is doing the highways. We are doing the local roads. We'll let private businesses manage the storefronts. So that's sort of, I think, the approach we're going to take. And we're going to have our organizing meeting first week in January. And hopefully I'll be able to report back on where we're going first.
Excellent, Mr. Guaramidi. I look forward to it. And congratulations on your appointment.
I think.
Well, yeah, it's a heavy load. But I'm really looking forward to seeing a return on some of these taxes we pay with this funding for infrastructure. It's been long needed. And I think, you know, unfortunately, it was COVID that really brought its light when everyone got sent home and the kids were doing their homework from home. And, you know, there's, you know, for example, look, I'm seeing not enough served necessarily on your side of the county, Mr. Guaramidi. When I, when I look at that map, where, you know, I kind of see that there's points that aren't, that aren't taken care of. But there's, there's major pockets of population going through Ms. Calloway's district that are going to be addressed. And there was multiple times I was on phones with people there for things other than county business that, you know, in the midst of COVID, phones were not doing it, you know, because there was too many people using, using the towers for data. And there would be dropped calls, delayed messages. And in times of emergencies like the snow we had last February, that can, that can really impact the situation. So I just want to say that. Mr. Toffenelli.
I'll have to agree, but I'm one of the 14% where I live. And if you look at the map that was up there, that whole area there, there's, there's a lot of homes in there that people, we depend on satellite. I depend on satellite. And when we had the storms over the last couple of days, and it just disrupts everything, even phones. So I'm very interested in completing this path, getting what we need so we can go after the funding to take care of the situation. Jack, congratulations. Did you attend that meeting or did you get notified by mail that you were now chair?
I attended and, yeah, we're 37 counties now, so we're covering a big chunk of the state. And we hope that we'll have the, you know, there's some great examples of private-public partnerships that have worked doing this. Places like Utah, Bozeman, places that have come together, allowed the government to build this utility to where the people need it. And then, you know, let the, let the private industry serve the special needs of Rancho or Valley Springs as it goes down there. So we'll see how it goes. I'll be happy to report back out as we go along. Hopefully we'll get some things moving.
I believe that's it, unless Supervisor wants to pipe up. I want to thank the presentation, Ms. Galeno. I want to thank Diane Cruz. Apologize if I'm butchering your last name, no intention.
That is crazy.
Cole, I already gave you kudos. That's all you're getting from me. And Krista, thank you. So we'll move on from there.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Item 18, resolution, economic and community development. Adopt a resolution authorizing the application for an acceptance of Calvers County allocation award resulting in revenue of $539,081 for years 2019, '20, and 2020, '21, with anticipated additional revenue in the amount of $699,784 for years 2021, '22, 2022, '23, and 2023, '24, to be expended by June 30, 2024, and designate the county administrative officer or his or her designee as the authorized represented, excuse me, representative for execution of related documents. Ms. Kathy Galeno.
Good morning, Chair, Stopper, Honorable Board. Kathy Galeno, your Economic and Community Development Director. And today, I have before you the resolution regarding our application and acceptance for the permanent local housing allocation funds, and establish a five-year plan for how to spend those funds. Should I join as a panelist? No. No, it's asking me to do stuff. Sorry. So following the 30-day public comment period, which started on November 9 and ended on December 9, we had received two additional comments. One was in writing, and one was by voice message. And the comments that we received were basically that they were looking at other alternatives for the funding, whether it be for home modifications for elderly and disabled, rental assistance, housing assistance. And we took those comments in. We also received one phone message, which was for a comment that was about homeless housing and affordability housing, which this program does not contemplate. So it really was a comment that didn't quite fit into this particular program. Based on the information, we revised, and Lee Kimball is here to help chat and talk about the plan. But the, the information that we received helped us refocus on the 10, we had 10 eligibility criteria that we were looking at for this permanent local housing allocation, which comes not often, but every five years or 10 years, we might get an allocation. It comes from funding that's from homes that are sold and purchased here. Funds are set aside under the SB 2 program, and then can be real, can be allocated to the county for reuse for housing, addressing our housing needs. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Lee Kimball right now, and she can go through our five-year plan.
Good morning, Lee Kimball, your Housing Programs Manager. So the permanent local housing allocation is a non-competitive formula allocation sourced, as Kathy said, from recording fees. And even though it's in its first five years, I would anticipate that we will see it again. The first two years of funding have already been collected on behalf of Calvers County, totaling $539,081. And the total anticipated to be available over the five-year period is 1.2 million. To receive these funds, we must submit an application with a five-year plan of how we'll use the funds in any combination from 10 eligible activities. The plan must have gone through a 30-day public comment period, which we completed December 9. And the plan can be revised without further comment, but it does require a board resolution. And of course, in Calaveras, any changes to the plan we would bring before the board for authorization. After the application is received, the funds that have been collected for Calaveras are sent and are to be deposited in an interest-bearing account, the interest from that account to be used for the authorized activities. Of the 10 eligible activities, staff are recommending the following. Number seven, accessibility modifications for low-income households that are owner-occupied. And number nine, homeownership opportunities through down payment assistance. These recommendations allow Calaveras County to meet four of the 44 programs in our housing element. Program H2A to pursue state and federal funding towards meeting housing needs. Program H3F, providing housing opportunity to low-income households. Program H5A, providing funding for down payment assistance. And Program HG3 to provide for reasonable accommodations. And although this does, our recommendations don't meet any of the regional housing need numbers, it does open up supply in two areas, one for our most fragile citizens with a housing modification, and the other for workforce housing. Our five-year plan proposes that we allocate our funds 70% for down payment assistance, 15% for accessibility modification, 10% for technical assistance for helping folks with the application, and 5% for the administrative costs. This will allow us to serve about 125 households, depending on what each application costs. And that's split evenly between the housing modifications and the down payment assistance. Both programs would be offered on a first come, first served basis to eligible households. Existing housing staff who are already in process of reviewing eligibility for our other housing programs and providing technical assistance would be processing these applications. Down payment assistance, sorry for the background noise, will be for households at or below 120% of area median income, which is determined by the household size. So for example, 120% of our, of area median income for a household with four persons is $98,040. By HCD standards, this is a moderate income, and it's aimed at the workforce. We would be asking to be able to provide up to 50% of down payment or closing cost assistance, and that would hopefully allow our local citizens to be able to compete in a very competitive housing market. Right now, we would still need to develop our outreach plan, but we do have a civic sparks in place in the, on housing staff that is there for outreach for all of our other housing programs. And other than that, we need to create the specific forms for applications and reports to get this going. And I'll take any questions you have.
Mr. Garamendi, I see you reaching for your button.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Lee. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing this forward. I just want to, we've discussed this offline. I just want to make sure that we're clear that if there are change, we can make changes to this plan as it currently states with a resolution of this board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
That is correct.
Got it. And that, these, these two, house, house modification, as well as the down payment, DPA, down payment assistance, those are very complex programs to put together, and they haven't been created yet for our county. We will see those before we begin executing that, correct?
That is correct. We'll be bringing back the program, the details, and all the scoping before we move forward in implementing the program.
Because there are things, there are organizations that do this. They probably have some pretty good models.
Oh, absolutely.
Including Golden State Finance Authority, which we are.
Yes.
Part of that JPA.
Exactly.
So I just wonder, as long as we're clear with that, I'm fine. Thanks.
Ms. Coway.
On the modifications, Area 12 Agency on Aging has been doing it for years, and it's not complicated. I mean, the problem has been finding contractors, because they have to be licensed, willing to do the work. So hopefully, this program will offer incentives to them to do that. So, thank you for bringing this forward. I'd like to see some stuff getting done versus our continually talking about it. Thank you, Ms. Kimball.
Any further board questions or comments? No?
There is no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board. You entertain a motion.
I move the adoption, authorizing the application.
Microphone.
Thank you. The application and acceptance of the county's allocation award.
Motion by Supervisor Coway. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Supervisor Garamendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need time to transition to the next item, do we?
No.
Okay. Because it's human resources instead of economic development, and community development. Okay. Item 19, resolution, human resources. Adopt a resolution approving, approving modifications to the Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA memorandum of understanding for the term December 18, 2021, to September 30, 2026. Ms. Judy Hawkins.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I am very pleased to bring before you today the resolution adopting the changes to our MOU with CCPSEA. We have a five-year agreement, and I do want to thank the members of the bargaining team for CCPSEA. This is a long process, back and forth. And Wanda Maddox, Natalie Jackson, Maria Adams, John Robinson, and Elena McManus were wonderful to work with. I also want to thank Nick Marvin from the Human Resources Office. So some of our highlights on our five-year agreement, we do have a 4% COLA, the first paid period after board adoption, and then 3.5% for the four years after that. We will also have the split in insurance, like we do with all of our other bargaining units, which is a 50-50 split up to 4.9%, a 65-35 split up to 9.9%. And any health insurance increases 10% or greater, we will have an 80-20 split with the county picking up 80%. We are also adding correctional officer uniforms for new hires or transfers into the correctional officer classifications. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Judy. Do we have any questions by board members? Doesn't look like it, so I'll go ahead and move to public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. A motion by Supervisor Toffnelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Folenorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board.
Thank you, members of the board. And I do want to thank you for your work also in these negotiations.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. You're too nice. I know it's more painful with me than a lot of others.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Coway.
Ms. Hawkins, off the side, so did you have trouble getting out today?
It was an adventure, and in fact, my husband actually had to bring me to work in his four-wheel drive Jeep.
Thanks.
Only glad everyone is here safe so far. Item 20, resolution, division of cannabis control. Adopt a resolution requesting state cannabis cultivation tax reform. Mr. Gregley, Mr. Greg Wayland, sorry.
Good morning, Chairman Stopper, members of the board. Yes, with this item, it's a resolution that would encourage reform for tax rates at the state. As a little bit of background on this, 2021 has been a particularly difficult year for cultivators, among other reasons, weather, and what is apparently a pricing crisis with respect to the dry weight of cannabis flower. And with respect to tax rates, and I, first of all, want to distinguish that this, this does not address local taxes. This is a resolution directed to state regarding state excise taxes. So recently, the tax rates are set to go up, excuse me, January 1, 2022, they're looking at a tax rate of $10.08 per ounce. And doing some rough math, there's two different ways to look at how this translates into practical terms for a pound of dry weight cannabis. One would be the net revenue that they would have after those taxes are taken out, and the other is the functional tax rate. So if you take, for example, what we're seeing is what I believe to be $300 to $500 per pound for a single pound of dry weight cannabis. So if you take that and go with the higher figure, just for the sake of this analysis, 500 divided by 16 is $31.25 per ounce. If you take another $10 off just for the state excise tax, that's $21.25 per ounce times 20, or times 16 is $340 per pound. So what we're seeing, and what I've asked for, is sort of an estimate on what the price per pound is to produce a pound of cannabis, and it's likely somewhere in the area of $320 per pound. So if you take the $340 net revenue from that pound and compare it with the cost to produce, they're almost on par. So what we're seeing is that the state excise tax is extremely burdensome on cannabis cultivators in our county. And the, just for the sake of comparing that, for example, to another tax rate, I pulled off data from the California Legislative Analyst Office, just to compare this to what you might see for a tax rate on a pint of beer, for example. They tax at the state level at 2 cents per ounce of drink volume, which works out to be about 32 cents for an $8 beer, which is about 4%. So the, the tax rate for that single pint of beer is 4%, whereas for cannabis, it works out to be closer to about 32% for a pound. And that is outside of whatever they have to spend for their startup costs, which most of our cultivators since May 18 of 2020 have startup costs. All of our permits have been issued in the span of time between May 18, 2020, and today. So you have startup costs. You have, that would include land acquisition, purchasing rights to apply, other business costs. And in addition to that, you have permitted cultivators who comply with all state laws, including wage laws and environmental laws. And so there's a significant cost of doing business for our local cultivators. And one of the reasons that I brought this item to you today is because the competitive disadvantage that the high state taxes bring into this equation for our permitted cultivators as compared to the black market is pretty staggering. As cited in the resolution, the proposed resolution submitted with this item, we're looking at somewhere around a 77% cost disadvantage for permitted cultivators versus black-market cannabis. So that is a pretty hefty difference in cost of doing business. So again, the purpose of 1795 is to enable the county to issue permits for cultivators who comply with all of our local regulations, comply with state laws, pay taxes that benefit the general fund and local interests, as well as providing safe work environments and protecting the environment versus what you may see in a black-market cannabis cultivation site. So it was important to us to be able to bring So it was important to us to be able to bring this to you today. We think that it's a worthwhile statement to make to the state and being able to give some relief in a way that makes sense for our local cultivators. So it's our recommendation that the board adopt this resolution. Alternatively, I'm happy to make any changes that you think are helpful or answer any questions you have.
Board member questions? Mr. Toffenelli?
I'll say something about this. What's written here, I don't think this is the problem, Greg. I think if you want to make some difference here, is send a letter to the state to crack down on illegal grows. Right now, they bust them, it's a slap on the hand, they go right back to doing what they're doing. There's no laws out there to throw them in jail or prevent them from going forward, doing it again. And the sheriff has spoke on this several times. They can't even take the pots, if it's an inside grow, the pots, the overhead lights, anything. So they just take plants, and they take the guys to jail, release them, and they go back to what they were doing. There's no laws. I think the letter needs to be addressed to the state to do something about the laws on this industry and the legal industry that's going on, not the tax. That's the real issue, is they refuse to do anything on the illegal grows. And give the sheriff's office or police departments some weapons to be able to prevent this going once they're busted. That's the real issue. So I don't think I can vote for this based on that until we can send a letter and the laws change within the state to really affect it. I mean, I was in a business, and I've never had any fees reduced because of the cost that it was costing me to do business. And they were throwing fees on anything and everything, buy some paint, five gallons of paint, there's fees on that. And those fees kept going up, never was there reductions on any of it, even the tariffs for steel coming in here, the cost of steel right now is crazy, and it's preventing any steel industry going forward of doing stuff. It's going to wood now because the lumber prices have gone down. So there's a lot of industries out there that are suffering, not just this industry, because of what's happening with COVID and everything else. But the real issue to me is the state laws, they're nonexistent for the legal growers. They just keep going back and back and back and back, and that's what needs to be addressed, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. I see your hand up, Mr. DiBasilio. I'll get to you in a moment. You know, you are talking about a major component of the issue, and I think you're right about the criminal end of it, you know, decriminalization and the state moving people out of jail by decriminalization on multiple, multitude ends. There's a meme I saw on Facebook, has this little boy, and he's sitting there kind of confused, and he's like, are you telling me that the fines for growing marijuana illegally are less than what the taxes are for growing it legally? Someone else also brought up earlier during public comment that, you know, taxes shouldn't be over 10% on any item when it comes to, you know, anybody in the United States. Well, there's a point to this that Mr. Wayland was talking about, more so pointing towards the canopy tax and what the effect is on the grower. By the time, the people that are making money off of this are the retail outlets, but at the same time, by the time they stack those taxes up and get to the very end, when it goes off the retail shelf, after January 1st, approximately 50% of gross is what the tax is taking out by the time everything is said and done. That's exponentially worse than most industries. And I would also like to agree with you that there's a lot of other industries that are being taxed and burdened by the state. I think we need to take a stand on all of them, really. I think the state's overstepped to a certain degree, from my point of view, on every business. I think this would be a first step in the direction. I think we do need to bring up other issues like the criminal side of it, because the state's fueling that, from my perspective. They fueled it, you know? Prop 64 was something I voted no on, and that's the reason I didn't support legal, it's not saying I didn't support legalization. I just don't support the state putting forward a proposition that says, look, vote yes on this now, we'll get it right for you later, because they never do, you know? And we need to bring more things forward, like them taxing the, you know, another supervisor sent me a thing, they're taxing COVID, business COVID relief money, the state is, that the feds aren't taxing. The feds gave these businesses this money to help them through, and they said, we're not going to tax you on this, this is supposed to help you out of a bad situation. The state's like, we'll take that money. There's a myriad of issues. I support sending this one forward to the state. I support sending another one forward to the state later, also describing the criminal issues. A point that Ms. Cowalway brings up frequently is we don't want a big old long letter because they aren't going to read it, it's going to sit on someone's desk out there. So I mean, one short point and another short point to those degrees, I would hope that the state would, you know, a short letter saying, hey, watch our board of supervisors' agenda item on video, so that they can see the way we're dealing with it, and, you know, it's just compounded with what we're doing here to try and deal with it. We are giving our sheriff money for the criminal side. The state's not helping out as much with the criminal side as we are in our own county. And I want to give Mr. DiBasilio, our Met team, and all the guys that are working for him, kudos, because they do a phenomenal job with what we give them. I mean, we give them millions of dollars a year, but they go over and beyond, and they stay busy. They don't stop, you know? They transition to busting indoor grows. So that was long, a little long-winded, but, you know, I have a lot to say on the issue. With that, right now, I do support this letter as it's stated. I think there needs to be more said, as Mr. Toffenelli said. Mr. DiBasilio, do you still have your hand up?
I do, but I can lower it if you'd like, that'd make you feel better.
Yeah.
I just want to kind of chime in here a little bit. I agree with what you just said, but I do agree with Mr. Toffenelli, too, in the fact that as he, as I used to have my own business, and I didn't get a break when my business wasn't doing well when it came to taxes, taxes came whether or not. I don't, and I'm not opposed to you guys lowering the tax, but I think going more than half of what we were, you know, you were going from 5% down to 2%, that's quite the drop. I feel for the legal growers, because they've been doing a fantastic job. We haven't had any issues. They've been very supportive of our going after the illegal grows. The other concern that I have is that I noticed that Mr. Wayland put in his paperwork that it was going to end or potentially end in September. The illegal growers are not going to go away in nine months.
Mr. DiBasilio?
Yes, sir.
We're talking the letter to the state, asking them to back off their taxes. Just so you're clear, that item 21 is been pushed off to a date to be determined in the future.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's okay, but some of those points, some of those points fit within 20, so if you want to stay within those guidelines, I would appreciate it.
I will absolutely do that. I am fully supportive of that letter going to the state, and if there's something that I can do from my end, I will more than certainly be glad to submit a letter also. I guess is the direction I'll go with that, then.
That's phenomenal. I think that Mr. Toffenelli, I would support you on moving forward with something to those ends. Is there anything further, Mr. DiBasilio?
No, sir, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
I'm sorry I jumped ship on you.
No, it's okay. Hey, I do it all the time. Marita always calls me out on it, though.
There you go, thank you.
Any further board comments?
I will, after a public comment.
After a public comment? Absolutely. We'll go ahead and call public comment.
I may have a completely different point of view on this. This seems like you guys as representatives of the people in Calaveras County, since we've never been able to have a vote, a citizen's vote, on whether we wanted pot in the first place, and now you're going to take a letter representing us that says, we want to encourage you to reduce the taxes on these people, because we want, as a community in whole, to stand behind our legal growers, which is 66 people out of 44,000 in this county. It irritates me to no end that we have to babysit a specific industry by overlooking everybody else. And it, look at the restaurants that weren't able to have people in their restaurant, in their dining rooms during COVID. Where did the tax, or the letters to encourage the state to reduce the taxes on those people for the property taxes that they weren't able to utilize? What about the cow grower, the animal growers, our sheep and our goats and our cattle? The pricing that ends up coming to the people who have the infrastructure and the, like you were talking about, when you had a business, that your startup costs are astronomical, but they don't whine and ask for somebody to have, to take a letter to the state to reduce their taxes? It's just astounding to me that we are babysitting people who have the wherewithal to make decisions of making a right decision to grow here, they have a right decision to make all of their infrastructure, they've said, it's okay, I'm going to start my business, even though I have to pay taxes. And now for us to say, we want to back them up against the state to reduce their taxes, and the whole financial thing about comparing, about the pricing on beer and taxes, it's just nuts to me. When we had the environmental impact report, that had all of the documentation that says why we shouldn't have that thing here in the first place, you've all heard it a thousand times, everybody says, the best opportunity or the best result from this whole environmental impact thing was a ban, and we went ahead and we wrote the ordinances and we're doing it, and now they want special treatment. I'm sorry, I'm upset about this. Have a great afternoon.
Hi, Stevie Others from Burson. I'd like to know, although this is a resolution for the state, I'd like to know, maybe we should come and think a little bit about closer to home. How would this affect Calaveras County? Would they get less revenue? I know, I think one of the reasons that these, any business is to make money. They should make money, that's for sure, but, you know, if they make more money, then they should pay more taxes. How would this affect the county as far as tax? Does anybody know? Or is this just a state thing, it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the county?
It's the state thing. The thought would be on returns from the state based on those taxes, though, I think is how it would apply with your question, so.
Okay, so the county itself would be giving up any revenue?
Thank you. Online comment? Assuming that no one else in the audience wants to make a comment at this time.
Vicki Ranki?
Yes, hi, Vicki Ranki. I'd like to just read into the public record the comments that were sent in by Calaveras residents against commercial marijuana, and Cracem is opposed to modifying the state tax rates for marijuana businesses. And so we're asking for a no vote on the resolution. The state of California should not be reducing the tax obligation of marijuana businesses. And the voters of California were told that permitted marijuana business would bring in billions of dollars to the state revenues. To support the elimination of the state cultivation tax would go against the will of the voters. The argument given in the resolution is that high taxes on licensed marijuana businesses is causing the black market to flourish and illegal growth continuing in the state. We find this statement absurd. The state has done nothing to prosecute illegal grows and black market sales. The state does not monitor or audit licensed businesses to verify how much product they produce and where the product is sold. Selling product in the black market is illegal and needs to be prosecuted. The growers went into this business knowing what the tax requirements would be and what their obligation would be to support the state policies. If the market is folding around the marijuana business, then the owners need to make their own decisions on staying open or closed, just as any other business would do, and we respectfully submit. So just to tag on to that, it's not the business of our county to advocate for reducing a state tax that goes out to everybody. We need that tax then, maybe to get rid of the illegal grows. And if we're advocating that the state doesn't have to collect from these growers anymore, where do you think that money's going to come from? And right now in Calaveras County, it's the taxpayers of Calaveras County that pay for the eradication of illegal marijuana grows, and that is, should not be. So anyway, I hope that you vote no against this, this is not needed, and to show our county supporting such a motion is wrong. And the people will let you know that it's wrong. So I hope that you will reconsider and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ranki. Further public comment?
Good morning, this is Jennifer Smith. I certainly respect the opinions and understand that when business operators go into a business that they know the expenses and we know what we're signing up for. I think to have a flat tax on any commodity is unsustainable. To have a 30% tax on a commodity at the manufacturing level is unheard of. No other commodity, no other agricultural product is taxed at that sort of rate. The state taxes are onerous, and they will create the collapse of the industry, of the legal industry, while the traditional market, the unlicensed market, continues to flourish. And it is the lack of ability of our law enforcement, due to lack of funds and lack of time and lack of resources, we don't have the time to eradicate the illegal market. And it is this flourishing illegal market that the state is condoning with these high taxes. At the very minimum, we need to have a gross proceeds tax or a percentage tax that, like the gentleman that did say, when you make money, you pay more taxes. If you're not making money, why are you paying taxes? Why, when we're making less money, are we paying the 30% tax? I can appreciate everybody's opinion on both sides of this matter, but many municipalities across the state are aligned in getting this tax reform changed, this tax changed. Mendocino County passed it last week, the city of Oakland passed it last week, it's on the agenda today in Sonoma, it's on the agenda today in Lake County. This is an important time in the cannabis industry, and if we're going to have a sustainable legal market in Calaveras County, it's important for Calaveras to align with other counties. So with that being said, I hope that we support this resolution. It's one step towards preserving what we've established in the county. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Further public comment?
There is no further online public comment.
Thank you. One last chance for anybody that hasn't made a comment from the audience. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further?
With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
I have a comment to make.
Ms. Callaway.
Um, I understand what Ms. Reniki and Supervisor Toffenelli are saying, but things are not always as simple as we wanna make them. That to proceed with the kinds of things they're talking about regarding law enforcement, I would then recommend that our sheriff draft up a letter and for the board's support on those kinds of things regarding law enforcement and the illegal growth. That is a separate issue, which I believe all of us could probably support. This issue has to do, in essence, with sustainability of an industry that is growing and changing as we learn about it. I think all of us in the state, cities, counties, the state of California, but, you know, we had a golden goose, and we were going to tax the hell out of it and fine it and fee it and whatever adjective we wanna put with it. And the reality is, is that's not sustainable as we grow and as this market changes. So, I just think that we can still deal with the issues that Reniki and Toffenelli talked about, but it can be done separately from this issue. And I think, as Mr. Stoppa said, there'd be board support for something like that. So, based on my comments, I would adopt the resolution requesting the state cannabis cultivation tax reform.
Further questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion unless that was a motion, Ms. Callaway.
A motion.
Okay, a motion by Supervisor Callaway. Do we have his second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Supervisor Garimendi. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? No. Passes on a four-one vote of the board. Item twenty-two, as we're bypassing twenty-one.
Um, Mr. Stoppa, Chair Stoppa, I'd like to make a comment on twenty-one.
Oh, yes.
I know it's been pulled. Um, I don't support it being pulled. Um, I'm sorry that it wasn't brought to the board, so I could have voiced my comments at that time. But if I remember from prior discussions, when we allowed distribution, um, we did it based on hoping distributors would become involved within Calaveras County. Distributors, item twenty-one, really dealt with also the distributors who are holding the funds for the cultivators. This does not deal with cultivators. And, um, so now we have distributors who are outside the county, holding funds for our distributors, excuse me, for our impacts, our cultivators. And I know, well, we like to put everything together and deal with it in one, one big umbrella. I just feel like in this case, we have committed to this industry, and, um, and it's complex, and it's fluid, and it's growing. And just like what we just did on item twenty, um, we want to encourage our locals to become distributors. If, and by not approving and doing, dealing with number twenty-one, it just doesn't do anything to say to our local community, our local cultivators, for, as an example, that you can be a distributor and you can have control over the funds. Right now, without that, they don't have control. The distributors hold on to the funds before it helps the cultivators. So I'm disappointed that this item was moved out, and I just want that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Item twenty-two, action item. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt the twenty-twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting calendar. Ms. Rebecca Turner.
Hi, I'm Robin Glanville, Rebecca, Attorney Assistant, Clerk Recorder. I'm presenting this item to you on my behalf. Um, we have presented the board meeting calendar, the recommended calendar for twenty-twenty-two, and I'd like to share it with you right now on the screen, if that's okay with the board. Are you able to see the calendar? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, we had the scheduled dates listed here, and we did wanna get clarification on the third Tuesday of the month as to how you let those items scheduled. They've previously been study session items or special meeting items. We're hoping the board could clarify.
I think we already did with a vote to make it regular meetings instead of, so so that would be a more substantial change than just clarifying it to you. Uh, it's already been clarified.
Uh, if I may, just for a moment, so the board did amend our existing ordinance to now call all meetings, which we put on this calendar, regular meetings. Um, I think that's what you're referring to, Chair Stoppa. But if the board still wished to kind of restrict what types of items were or were not agendized by staff on particular meetings, I think that's the type of direction the clerk may be looking for at this point.
Understood. My apologies. Ms. Glanville, I apologize.
No, not at all. Um, so we are presenting the calendar to you to see if it's acceptable, these dates that we provided. I did wanna point out in November, the reason for the single date was due to CSAC being held the November fourteenth through the eighteenth, and then we have the Thanksgiving holiday being held the following week.
Hold on, we have a lot of conversations going on in here at one time. Ms. Von Latta.
Thank you, Chair Stoppa. Um, I did wish to request that we move the, um, the entire schedule for June up one week so that the budget hearings would begin on June seventh. And the rationale for that is due to the fact that there's a conflict with rural, um, uh, yeah, RCRC, Rural County Representatives of California, that takes place that second week of June.
That that second week, uh, moving to the first week is what you're suggesting, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, instead of the fourteenth through seventeenth?
Correct.
I for one, if it is, if this were to be a poll, Ms. Callaway, I would be in favor of that.
I would be in favor of that. Does that mean we could drop the twenty-eighth?
If that's the board's direction and we just rolled the whole thing forward, then yes, indeed, we would be dropping the twenty-eighth.
I'd support that. Okay.
Yes? Mr. Toffenelli's a yes. Ms. Callaway? Yes?
Yes.
All right, the poll says five-oh, yes.
Okay. I'm guess I'm not clear. If CSAC meets after Thanksgiving, why aren't we meeting on the fifteenth of November? Am I missing something?
They changed the dates, I do believe.
They did?
But I defer to, um, to Ms. Glanville.
CSAC begins the fourteenth of November through the eighteenth.
Oh, God. Thank you.
That's a change from tradition, because as long as that's been here, it's been the week after.
Yeah.
Yeah, they changed it.
Okay. Fourteenth, eighteenth.
Robin, I believe the idea was to take the twenty-eighth off. That's what I wanted to clarify before. Okay, so I'm moving the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
So just move the whole, yeah, the whole June schedule advanced one week, probably.
Thank you.
Also, ju- just a question. You know, with Thanksgiving, I, you know, not knowing what our schedule will be like at the end of the year next year, we might have some pertinent things we may need to address, which is always hard at the end of the year with all the holidays. But Thanksgiving's on Thursday and Friday. Why are we taking Tuesday off?
Historically, we haven't scheduled board meetings on that day, but it's at your discretion, obviously.
I'm just throwing the question out there. I I don't know. It may be that we don't have enough to actually press forward on that time, but we could always call for a special meeting if it's needed. So, I, you know.
Or on the twenty-ninth.
That's now open.
It's open, twenty-ninth of November.
Right.
Well, we can do, I don't know how much staff is gonna like this, but the first, and just do boom, 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 and then have the later part of the month off with the amount of time off that staff takes during that time and other things that happen. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of ways, you know, to metaphorically skin the cat. Not that I would ever do that.
She was making a pitch, man.
I've been reprimanded before.
I guess it would be a question, what is that, what is the burden on staff for doing a back-to-back versus relieving some time for the holidays?
So, I mean, this is just my knee-jerk here, but I but I will note that if we were to do that, that would be five board meetings in a row between October eleventh and November eighth on a weekly basis. So, um.
And also, that would be the November election that week. Am I correct?
Yeah.
I do believe that.
Oh, the eighth is the election day? Okay, for some rea-, yeah, it's the second Tuesday.
Yes, the second.
Yes.
It's the second Tuesday. That's correct, Mr. Toffenelli. All right.
Throw that idea out.
There's a lot of prep by the clerk's office during that time, so staff's kinda loaded down. You know, all in all, I I brought up the question because I just wanted to know. We don't need to necessarily schedule it now as opposed to if there's something pressing we could call for a special meeting and do it then. Do it that way if the board so decides. And that way, we can just keep that November the way it's written, if the board's okay with that. Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Yes? Yes. Mr. Garmy's a yes, I'm a yes. Ms. Toffenelli and Ms. Voldorff are yeses. If, is there anything further?
Um, not this time. Rebecca did want me to mention that November eighth, like you said, is the general election. Not that she's opposed to having a board meeting on that date, but if you did wanna change it to a different date, she wouldn't be upset about that either. Um, we're just throwing it out there. That's all.
Historically, historically, though, Robin, you you mentioned historically. Historically, we've always met on election day.
Okay.
Right, we get a, where all our vote pins and stickers, I voted, so I mean.
Okay, so we're leaving the eighth then, right?
For now.
Okay.
Any further board suggestions or questions? Uh, I'll go ahead and go to public comment.
So, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. For the third Tuesday, did you guys wanna leave it with study session only items, or what was the board kind of thinking they would like to see on those third Tuesdays?
You know, generally studies, I, session-type things, but if there's something presse, I'm pressing, I'm not opposed to having a regular agenda item. They're all labeled regular agendas now, or regular meetings?
Yes.
So I think that opens us up to being a little bit, uh, I'm I'm struggling for a word here, Mr. Toffenelli. It gives us a lot of room to work with. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for, Ms. Callaway.
Uh, if, I would prefer, I mean, it's fine to regular meetings and we can put other things on there, but I I'd prefer to keep that third Tuesday, if we do any study sessions on that third Tuesday, not going to the second or the fourth, but, um, and then any other agenda items that are regular agenda items can be put on there. Ms. Callaway?
That's fine.
Mr. Garimendi? I'm in agreement with Mr. Toffenelli also, Ms. Voldorff. So that's five people, yes, study sessions. If there's anything need to be added on it, then we can.
Thank you.
Want to go with comment? I didn't think so. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I'll move this item, Mr. Chair. A motion by Supervisor Toffenelli?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a five-oh vote of the board. Thank you, Ms. Glanville. I appreciate it. Item twenty-three, resolution, administrative office. Adopt a resolution authorizing a loan not to exceed six million five hundred thousand dollars from the road impact mitigation fee, skip special revenue fund to various disaster recovery funds for cash flow purposes pending reimbursement. Ms. Summer Nikotero and Mr. Robert Packenger.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, I'm the members of the board, Summer Nikotero, Assistant CEO. Uh, today we are bringing forward a resolution to extend the term as well as increase the amount of the rim loans that were authorized to fund our two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen winter storm disaster recovery projects. The original loan, which was approved by the board in October of two thousand nineteen, and the amount of three point two million dollars expires on December thirty-first of this year. The request for an extension to June thirtieth, from point three, as well as an increase in funding approximately three point three million dollars, is requested to cover the anticipated delay in the recovery of these funds from FEMA. Our current rent balance of eleven point three million dollars prior to our strong, strong on draws will be sufficient to cover this increase in one while we await reimbursements. As of today, there are approximately one point five in reimbursements that have already been submitted to FEMA, and we're just waiting on those funds to come through. In addition, five of our six large sale projects, which are projects over a hundred thousand dollars, are submitted and are waiting, are, uh, are being submitted in the next couple of months, and we'll be waiting on approximately four million dollars from those submissions. The remaining small projects are, uh, are scheduled to be completed in the next several months. One final large project, the Royal Road Flat Road Project, is awaiting Caltrans approval. This project is scheduled in late spring of twenty twenty-two, if everything comes through, and we're allowed to proceed. Given our current delay of reimbursement to up to six months, what? It's not clear.
I can hear you've just fineed, Ms. Callaway. Something's up with your microphone, Summer.
My microphone's coming, I'll see the other one.
Okay.
Let me see if that works. Is this better?
Way better, phenomenal.
Oh, good, okay. Sorry. Do you need me to start over? I can.
Marita's back, you can go ahead.
Back. All right. Do you want me to start over from the beginning? I don't know how much you can understand.
I I was able to understand you, but I'm used to talking gibberish, so.
Okay, I'll just start over so it's clear. I wanna make sure everybody has all the information.
Okay.
All right. So, I'm bringing forward this resolution to extend the term as well as increase the amount of rim loans that were authorized to fund our two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen winter storm disaster recovery projects. Uh, the original loan, which was approved by the board in October of two thousand nineteen, in the amount of three point two million dollars, is set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. This request for an extension to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, as well as the increase in funding of approximately three point three million dollars, is requested to cover the anticipated delay in recovery of funds from FEMA. The current rent balance of eleven point three million dollars prior to our storm loan draws is sufficient to cover the increase in our loan amount while we await that reimbursement. As of today, there are approximately one and a half million in reimbursements that have been submitted to FEMA, and we're just waiting for those funds to come in. In addition, we have five of our six large projects, which are projects over a hundred thousand dollars, that we're waiting on, uh, just the last touches administrative and notices of completion to submit to FEMA. That should be done in the next couple of months. The remaining small projects are scheduled to be completed in the next several months as well. We do have one final large project, the Royal Road Flat Road Project, which is awaiting Caltrans approval. If everything goes as planned with that project, it's scheduled in late spring of twenty twenty-two. Uh, given the delays in Given the delays in reimbursements of up to six months, depending on, I know we just had a lot of major disasters throughout the country, we generally are in the six-month window on reimbursements. This extended date will allow sufficient time for all of our funding to be reimbursed. Administration, Public Works, and Auditor Controller's Office have discussed our cash flow needs, and we all agree that this loan will not impact any other rim-funded projects. Any questions?
You know, moving forward with loans from the rim funds, I understand most of these are for disaster relief, which are fairly stable revenue sources when it comes to getting money back, but I just want to make sure that when we're doing this, we dot all our i's, cross all our t's, because we don't want to mess up, because I want to make sure that we are able to pay that money back to the rim fund so it can be used in the places it needs to be in the future.
Regardless.
Right. Regardless, we're going to have to, so hopefully we don't have to take it out of the general fund someplace else. That's the only statement that I have on it, but I trust that we've taken broad steps to doing all these steps right in the last few years, as opposed to a few things in the past that were done before I was here, so I don't know any details. Mr. Toffinelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Part of the concerns that I had, and I saw an email yesterday, was some of these funds are supposed to be meant for the wagon trail project, and my concerns are not getting paid back the amount that we're borrowing here in time that we'll need it for wagon trail projects. So have we put that in here, that we understand that those funds are going to be needed for that project that they've been earmarked for?
Yes. So I mentioned, we had spoken with Public Works and Auditor Controller's Office yesterday, identified a rough quarterly cash flow need for that large project, and we all felt comfortable that we would be able to meet those cash flow needs even with this rim loan addition.
The other question I have is, since we borrowed $6.5 million and the county's match was only 6.25% for these funds, we are now paying more than 6.25% because we're having to pay the interest on the loaned amount. Does anybody have a figure on the amount of money that we're going to pay from general fund for the 6.5 that we're borrowing from this fund?
So as of right now, I don't have that, but that is something that our office is working on currently. We, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Summer. But obviously, we're going to be paying more than 6.25% because of this interest payments that we will have to make.
Right.
And make sure the interest rate may be fixed, but the longer it goes to pay back is the more money it's going to cost us.
That's true.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering the questions I talked to you in your office about earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me.
Further questions? Public comment?
There's no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board. Entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Oh, wait. Yeah, it is a resolution. I just want to make sure. I was looking at the next one that said informationally. Okay. A motion by Amanda Vondorff, Supervisor Vondorff?
A second.
A second by Supervisor Garamendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. With that, it's a little bit after 12:00. We have two items left. We take lunch and come back. Okay. 1:30? Sounds right.
How long can I take her to buy me lunch? She owes me lunch.
Enjoy.[1776.33]